Actually, Mr. Chairman, our Vice Chair has just arrived.
Jeff, right?
Yes.
There you go, my friend.
You did it already, it's okay. Nothing I can do is knock my head with it.
Okay.
It's not moved.
Zack. I'd like to announce it was just handed by, actually, I have the journal but I did not see this. You'll be receiving copies of an article regarding the construction boom at CUNY which appeared today in the Wall Street Journal. And I can't synopsize it because I haven't read it yet, but obviously it's good news for CUNY. So we'll move directly to the policy calendar and we'll call on the Vice Chancellor to brief us on the items in the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to be going through eight projects that will require action and then we have, actually, two informational reports. One will be on CUNY Simulation Center and the other one will just be an update for the committee on where we stand with the dormitory for the College of Staten Island. So I will start with the policy calendar items first. And item number one is an item for Brooklyn College. It's a campus-wide fire alarm and security system upgrade. Because of the building expansion across the campus, the existing alarm systems need to be expanded and upgraded to be brought up to code. This contract with Johnson Controls for Phase 1 will enable the completion of this first phase of the campus-wide upgrades. Work includes a feasibility study, a new central command station in Ingersoll Hall, and an installation of new infrastructure for the fire alarm system. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through all the items and then you'll take your vote, or?
Unless there are members of the committee here who feel we should not take an aggregate vote. Anything in particular that stands out that you need a separate? Okay, go ahead, please.
Item number two is an item for Hostos Community College at 475 Grand Concourse. This is an ADA renovation project. When the college took over this former tire factory in the 1970s, it did very few renovations. This project will convert the building's 20 existing toilet rooms to 12, six each for men and women that are ADA compliant. They will be larger, more energy and water efficient, and easier to clean. Item number three is an item for Lehman College. It's a new modular childcare center. With an increasing demand for campus daycare facilities, this prompted plans to construct an expanded childcare facility within the vacant T2 building. When the T2 site was chosen instead for the college's new science facility, it was decided to install a modular building at another site on campus to house the proposed childcare facility. And this would authorize a contract with Axis Construction Corporation for construction of a modular children's daycare center, and this will be located between David and Schuster Halls. I just want to point out, Mr. Chairman, that this will be the second modular project that we are doing here at CUNY in this era. We just completed a modular building at Bronx Community College for their childcare development center, and we've had a lot of success with these modular buildings. Item number four is a lease extension at 620 Isham Street for CUNY in the Heights. This is located in Washington Heights, and these facilities are used to provide general education programs for the residents of northern Manhattan. These programs are jointly administered by BMCC and Hostos, and this resolution will authorize a one-year extension to the current lease. Item number five is a lease renewal at One Metro Tech Center in Brooklyn on behalf of Medgar Evers College. This would authorize a 16-month renewal of this lease of administrative space for the college. The college would like to take these administrative functions and move them back on the campus. In order to be able to do that, they have to do construction work on the campus, and therefore they don't have enough time to do that without extending the lease where they are. And this resolution would authorize the current lease just to be renewed for another 16 months so that they can get the work done on the campus itself. Item number six is a new lease at 50 West 40th Street in New York, and this would be the house of the new community college. This site, which is the former Catherine Gibbs School, has been identified as a suitable location for the temporary location of the new community college in Manhattan. It's already fitted out with classrooms and offices and relevant support space, and this space will require minimal renovation to accommodate the college's needs. This authorization, this resolution will authorize a new 10-year lease for these facilities. And I might point out that until the new community college gets up to speed, SPS will use this location, as well as we're offering it to other colleges who would like to use the classroom space in Manhattan. Item number seven is also a new lease at 132 West 31st Street to provide a central facility for CUNY School of Professional Studies. The CUNY School of Professional Studies currently operates from a variety of locations scattered throughout Manhattan. This new facility at West 31st Street has been identified as a suitable central location for consolidating the school's academic and administrative functions. This resolution will authorize a new 15-year lease for these facilities. And item number eight is the purchase of a vacant parcel at 3069 Villa Avenue in the Bronx on behalf of Lehman College. This site will be used as an off-campus site for installation of a new modular facility that will house the college's School of Nursing, which is being relocated to make room for the construction of the college's new science facility. The college's School of Nursing is currently housed in the T3 building, currently slated for demolition to make way for Phase 2 of the college's new science facility. There being no suitable space elsewhere on campus for the nursing school, a vacant lot nearby has been identified as suitable for constructing a modular building that can house the school temporarily until such time as the school can be relocated back on campus. At that time, the site and modular building will be put to use for other academic programs for the college as needed.
The Staten Island master plan is added on as policy item?
No, that was, we did that last month, the master plan. Those are the minutes.
But what is the, you had two added up?
Yes, it's for the dorm at the college at Staten Island. I just wanted to bring that here.
So it's informational?
Yes.
Okay, so we can vote on these eight items. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second is on favor?
Five.
Can I just ask a question about number six? It doesn't affect my vote in any way. Is the plan to build a new community college facility somewhere while the 50 West 40th? Is that a temporary home for the college?
It's a temporary home for the college. Our hope is that we already own a parcel of land where North Hall is located, which is part of John Jay. The functions of North Hall will now go into the new building that we're constructing for John Jay, and it's our hope that that will be the site of the new community college's permanent home.
Okay. And do you know roughly how many students this facility can house?
I think it's about 6,000 or 7,000 students.
Yeah. It's a pretty large facility.
Okay.
I have a question too. I was wondering, you know, CUNY's not going anywhere, and on behalf of the students, I was wondering if we were thinking of getting a building to own so we could stop some of this leasing and renting, which is in the millions. So, you know, if you guys are thinking about getting capital from anywhere so we can get this on board, instead of, you know, next five years from now, we don't have to vote on leasing all this property. We have all the businesses housed in one CUNY facility. Anyone's thinking about that?
Yes. We're always thinking about that. And it's all driven by the economics of the time in which we're operating. We have been, over time, consolidating space, mainly in leased space, but also in acquiring facilities that we would own. And we will continue. It is, it's a function of where the money is. On leased space, we do it through our operating budget. Buying buildings, we have to do it through our capital program. So it's really a function of where we can allocate the funds and how effectively we can get what it is that we want. It's not always the smartest thing to own. Sometimes it's better to have flexibility and be nimble so that you can make changes. And in some of the functions, that is the strategy that we use.
The state and the city have also been very generous in terms of picking up our lease costs.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I have a question about that same item. Is it still the hope, the plan, to have a private-public partnership on the space that's North Hall rather than use that building?
Absolutely.
The idea is to leverage off of a private developer so that we could build a facility at a vastly reduced price. And we've had experience with that, and it's worked very well.
As you know, this year, admissions have had to cut off at an early point because we have many more applicants than we can handle. For the future, what is, what are your thinking of how we might be able to handle this in next year or the year after that, if this trend were to continue? Will we need additional rental space beyond what we have now? Do we have the resources for that, if we do need that? What are your thoughts on that? I'm just curious.
You know, I think that one of the things that we need to look at is the usage of the space on the campuses. Clearly, they're not all being used 11 or 12 hours a day, and I think before we think about leasing more space, we have to look ultimately at the usage on each individual campus. You know, if it should go further, I guess that we would have to begin to look at the enrollment and to look if we need to lease additional space. But I think for the next couple of years that, you know, it's not going to be perfect, but it's enough to get us through, and as I said, we'll have to work with the campuses to see how the space is being used. Maybe, you know, some of the functions that the campuses are leasing out will have to be taken off the campuses and that space just used totally for instruction.
Just to correct the record, Manfred, I would use different words to describe what it is that you said, but get to the same place. We're not cutting off. What we are doing is creating waiting lists. And we've had reports this morning that already we're going into these waiting lists at some of our campuses, and we expect to get in deeply. Because of our experience in the past, we know that students say they're going to come, they don't come, and therefore, once we have the commitment on a waiting list, we can get deep inside.
Manfred's point, and several points here are well made, given the surge in enrollment that we have now and we are anticipating we'll go forward. Is there a, what we call, master portfolio strategy analysis going on that would put each of the colleges into a total portfolio with spaces that they currently occupy or projected in need so we have a master plan over the next five years for what will be required and we can look at it on not only a gross basis but a sale versus lease basis?
Let me just say that this committee knows, we have probably done, at least since I've been here, five or six master plans for individual campuses. All those master plans incorporated both current enrollment and projections, and we work very closely.
Individual master plan?
Right. But let me just get to the, the other thing is that within my division, we are the holder of all the space. We know where the space is, how it's being used. It's called Arcabus, and it's a system that not only we have centrally, but that the campuses can access. And third, I guess it was a year ago that the university did its master plan for the State Board of Regents. And if you go back to that master plan, there is a fair amount talking about space and about facilities. So on a number of levels, we've looked at the usage and where the deficits are and where we have an abundance of space. So going forward, the next year, year and a half, we're going to be looking very closely at that data and at those numbers to make sure that we will have accurate, adequate space to be able to handle all the students that are coming to CUNY.
And that's centralized?
Yes.
You can pull it up on the screen and know?
We can pull it up on the screen.
And then it's setting priorities in terms of what to demand for spaces?
And I know that Executive Vice Chancellor Loog has done a lot of work in terms of the enrollment, and we have been working very closely with her and sharing that data with her. So that has gone into the equation in terms of her looking at the growth in enrollment.
Thank you.
I noticed that materials, we have a 10-year lease. We don't anticipate that.
You never know, and we just wanted to build in a little bit of leeway for ourselves. You know, some projects go very quickly and others take a little bit more time. We didn't want the landlord of the door, you know, kicking you out. Kicking us out. So we thought we'd buy ourselves, and because of the location, even if we were to be as lucky as we've been the last few years when we get this project going, this is great space. So whether it's Hunter or whether the Graduate Center or BMCC needs space in Manhattan, they would be able to use this space.
Is this the appropriate time to ask the question about timing and thinking on the new community college? Start date, completion date, occupancy date, so my way premature.
We're going to start in about a year and a half.
The planning?
Yeah, we're all, we're on target. We are interviewing now for its founding president, and I will be presented with some of the candidates that the committee has already interviewed. We are hiring faculty, the first eight faculty positions that were authorized, and those searches are moving ahead. We're working with the State Education Department. We have a series of, going through whatever the regulatory requirements are for SED. And we have a series of committees, university-wide committees. I forget the number, but six or seven of those committees, largely faculty committees, that are going through a whole variety of tasks that need to be made. Also, we expect to get significant amount of private support, which I believe is going to happen and happen fairly soon. And the mayor, in his executive budget, put in about $9 million, and that $9 million is the enabler for us to hire these eight faculty and to start the lease costs on 40th Street. So we're moving ahead.
Did I hear the Vice Chancellor say that this would be a P3 or public-private partnership?
Yes, that's our hope, that it would be a public.
So you are RFP that?
Absolutely.
That's at the John Jay site.
John Jay site.
Yeah.
The square footage on the site is almost a million square feet. It's a pretty large.
And we need roughly?
We would need about 450,000 square feet for the new community college. So the hope is to be able to do some kind of public-private partnership, and of course, the highest and best use of that site beyond the educational use is residential. So we're waiting for the market to behave properly before we go in.
But you're developing the RFP now?
We're looking at developing the RFP now. We're still waiting for the market to get a little bit stronger.
And we'll need that space also for John Jay. I mean, I don't envisage, even with the new campus, which is going to be magnificent, that they still have a deficiency in the space that they need. So we envisage that not only the new community college will go there, but spill off of either faculty offices or classrooms.
So they'd be somewhere between 400, 400, 500,000 square feet for private development?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
We have the votes, so you want to go right to the information?
You want to do the votes first?
We did, we did.
Okay, great.
I neglected the discussion, so we had the discussion afterward. It's kind of good to get the deal through and then ask questions later.
So I would like to introduce a couple of people and then, yeah, introduce this project. I'd like to introduce Dana Sunshine, who works with Jennifer Friedman on our public-private partnerships at CUNY. And I'd like to introduce Todd Drake, who is with Ballinger Associates. Let me say that in the wake of 9/11, there was a tremendous drive downtown to create a first responders program, as well as an allied healthcare simulation training facility in Lower Manhattan. BMCC took the lead for CUNY, and in 2004, we received both city and state appropriations of $21 million for the construction of this type of center. CUNY began looking for a partner, a hospital partner, because traditionally, simulation centers are constructed along with a hospital partner. We first approached Beekman Downtown, who at that time were going through some very tough financial times, and I believe they are continuing to go through some tough financial times. We then approached St. Vincent's, and I don't have to tell everybody here what happened to St. Vincent's. And we also approached Continuum Healthcare. Beth Israel is another facility that we approached, but at the time, they were also realizing very tough financial challenges. So in 2008, NYU Medical Center actually approached CUNY because they heard about our quest to be able to create this type of simulation center. And we realized that utilizing both institutions' resources, that we were going to be able to build this simulation center for once and for all. And what NYU brought to the table was their training and educational and research expertise. CUNY, for once, we were able to bring the money to the table, the $21 million for the capital construction, and we were able to strike a deal with Bellevue to be able to lease the space to create this 25,000-square-foot, state-of-the-art simulation center. And the location is the C and D wing of Bellevue Hospital at First Avenue, 462 First Avenue. We're actually very thrilled to have been able to find this facility. And along with NYU, we identified really the, I guess, preeminent firm that does simulation labs and facilities in the country, which is Ballinger Associates. And we have now gotten to the point where we're actually going to start construction very soon of this site. So I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Dana, and she will then turn it over to Todd.
Sure. Just a little bit more background on the users for the facility. There's many groups at CUNY who'll be able to take advantage of the center. As some of you may know, CUNY has 13 nursing schools and graduates approximately 1,200 RNs per year. This represents 50% of all RNs graduating from nursing schools in New York City each year. CUNY also provides citywide leadership and emergency management and first responder training and certification through programs at BMCC, John Jay, LaGuardia, and many others. And as Iris mentioned, BMCC will be CUNY's lead institution in the center. They'll train their nursing, their allied health, workforce development, and continuing education departments in the facility. They'll also appoint a new faculty member with expertise in simulation education and research, who will serve on the executive staff of the center. And other schools at CUNY as well will be able to use the facility for a variety of coursework, such as Hunter College, LaGuardia, Sophie Davis, and John Jay. In addition to these user groups, the emergency training needs of various Lower Manhattan agencies will be able to use the center. New York Downtown Hospital will use the center for decontamination and emergency management training exercises. We will also provide space for community training, such as CERT team training and volunteer ambulance service training. And we also plan to develop courses in emergency management, which will be offered to Lower Manhattan businesses. So ultimately, this center will be one of the largest simulation facilities in any urban location in the U.S. It will be the only resource of its kind in Manhattan. And so I would like to introduce Todd Drake from Ballinger, the architecture firm who's working with us on the project, and he'll walk through the center design and give you some more information on what it's all about.
Thanks.
I'm from, as I've been introduced, Todd Drake from Ballinger. We have one firm in Philadelphia that specializes in academic and medical and medical education facilities. We go with a very large concentration on the East Coast. Work in Manhattan for Waltham Cornell Medical College up there, St. Vincent's before, and New York Presbyterian as well. As simulation centers go, our particular expertise at Ballinger, we have top of the list the New York Simulation Center that we're talking about here today, the 14,000-square-feet program and 25,000-square-foot floor plate. Other centers that our firm and I have designed for others, the Johns Hopkins School of Medicine, Simulation Center there, Waltham Cornell Center, a new center in a new school of medicine for VCU, for Virginia Commonwealth, and others as well, some in design, some complete, all taking a number of kind of leading factors into the design and the body of work here informing this new center for you as well, in terms of our previous experiences, the centers we've seen, the other things that we've designed as well. As mentioned, the centers here on the third floor in the Bellevue Building, this is a kind of view from the corner of 26th and First Avenue. This is the existing facility, so it's the two wings, the C and D wings. The main point of arrival from First Avenue and up in through the building is this elevator bank here in the existing plan. Some images, pretty straightforward, scheduled for demolition, starting as soon as abatement, as soon as August of this year.
It occupies the whole floor?
It occupies the entire third floor, so all four wings and the central area, the intersections of the four wings. So when we start, when we got started very early, when we actually came to our first interview, we had some ideas about what the potential of the center could be. Given the broad use and the broad constituency base here, certainly there are going to be a number of different institutions using the center at the same time. So the idea that we could have a common space in the middle that could help collect people and give them orientation and weight finding, and then allow the other wings to be a little bit more private, a little bit more quiet for instructional activities that would move on from the shared common space. So as the plan started to develop, there was, that logic really started to play out. We've got administration spaces, we've got high-fidelity or higher-end simulation spaces, multipurpose simulation spaces, and then a simulation suite for examinations and patient experiences, all the OSCE Center on the right-hand side of the suite. So you'll start to see different, some different images here that relate to the multipurpose use, and obviously classrooms and interaction spaces, the higher-tech spaces for ORs and OPGYN work and labor and delivery work. And then in the lower right-hand is an image of the kind of patient encounter experience, where you've got a simulated actor participates with the participant, the students, and usually a proctor and instructor that supervises that activities through an observation window and through filming and recording. As the, as the plans have developed, I'll walk through each of the, each of the wings, the central common area, first the administration suite, again, with the orientation that this is, this is active at the front door. Maybe I'll just pause there for a moment. We had, in terms of the programming process, we had almost seven months of programming with all of the institutions that Dana mentioned in the lead-up to this. We had very large meetings and kind of a forum very similar to this, and it was a very productive, very collaborative process with Sophie Davis and John Jay and CUNY and BMCC and NYU, all at the table together, working together to really prioritize and maximize the program that they're going to get out of the center. So there was a lot of, a lot of big collaborative activities and a lot of shared benefits between the institutions, having multiple people at the table at the same, at the same time. So this is, comes from a very broad endorsement base. The administration suite in the upper right-hand, in the northeast wing, is, occupies the director's offices. offices, touch down and collaborative space for instructors and development work. So instructors can come here from the remote sites, touch back down into the administration suite, work with development content people to help develop in the curriculum, help them develop their programs that they want to use in the center. They can also use this as a resource when they're here for the day. So if they have classes or cycles that are going through the center, they could come in here and use the support area from the administration space. The central common space area for rooms, debriefing and briefing and meeting rooms and classrooms and waiting areas. It was determined very early on, one of the things we were really trying to understand initially is the flow-through rate, you know, how many people come to the center in one big area of activity? And then how do we move those people out into the wings and accommodate them that way? And so we looked at a number of different metrics and matrices to understand where students were coming from, how we take care of them when they arrive at the center, what do they need, what kind of services, lockers, cantries, those kinds of things, waiting areas, flexible classrooms to arrive at the program with the central common area space. So there's a waiting area here, there's a login and terminal stations here for online Facebook content activities or logging into the center, a point of reception, four classrooms in the middle that are flexible, rearrangeable. This classroom is able to be subdivided into two, so you can have two 21-person classrooms or one combined 42-person classroom. Those classrooms can be broken down into collaborative teams, you can do six-person teams in there of six teams, and you can also bring simulators into those spaces as well. The whole facility is very AV-intensive. There's cameras, audio speakers, and interfaces electronically throughout the whole center. The idea that there's, again, the broad campus, this is kind of a hub for all the campuses to utilize, the activities here or activities on the remote campuses will be able to come into the center and be played, reviewed, recorded, and sent out to other sites as well. So certainly very accommodating from an AV and a recording environment. The enlargement plan of that central area, point of reception right inside the lobby, and then briefing and activity spaces in here that are really fed from the wings. So a lot of the instructional activities, the hands-on instructional activities happen in the remote wings. And then a lot of those, they break out of those spaces, move into the central core, we use a classroom, and then exit the facility. So they may go into a classroom, go through an orientation process, move into their simulation space, move out of the simulation space, back into the classrooms, be kind of, get a post-performance evaluation, and then leave the center. The high fidelity simulation area is the northwest wing, which houses the large SIM ORs, and then there's a flexible training space and the OSCE center space. This is the flexible space. This is basically one large lab that can be subdivided with control and support in here. This space was, the goal of this space was to be able to bring 40 students into the center and have a limited number of instructors supervise ongoing activities in here simultaneously. So you can have teams of eight, you can have five teams of eight, and another group of 10 students overseeing that, all basically covered by one instructor. So BMCC was very, was very interested in this particular aspect of the center for their needs for the 40 people that they have that they bring into the center at one time, for nursing especially. So you'll see that there's a kind of trauma and ICU arrangement across the bottom in terms of the numbers, one through five, the ability to have briefing and debriefing activities and control. And then some different ways that that one space can be set up differently. So you can have navigational trainers, torso trainers, placement stations, even the ability to have FDNY, emergency management, those kinds of things, come in and do disaster training in here, do transfer training, patient lifts, activities for home health that transfer patients from wheelchairs to beds and into the home health environment, and then the three-bed trauma unit. So there's actually a wall that separates this that allows the whole suite to be used simultaneously, or there's a wall that closes off and you can have two different scenarios playing at different times, again, for kind of maximum utilization and maximum flexibility. This is the interior view of the entry lounge area as you arrive off of the elevators. This is one of the flexible classroom spaces in the central space for 20. The high fidelity simulation wing has three of the large simulation rooms that are basically fit out the same. They have independent control rooms, so different groups for team training can use different spaces independently, or there are, there is the ability to kind of be able to utilize the whole wing. There are also some, there are also some medium, medium simulation rooms that are patient rooms that can be combined as well. I do it in the last image.
Okay, that's fine.
So these rooms can be in a kind of procedure simulation room or a patient room kind of mode with control. The ORs are very standard OR spaces with scrub seats, the booms, the arms, the anesthesia equipment, and then all the movable equipment, nursing stations that would simulate a real-life OR with mannequins and with teams, nurses and doctors working side by side in simultaneous training. So here's one of the, one of the mannequins in here, in the view from the control room where the operator and the instructor have the mannequin go through their processes in the OR environment, whether it's labor and delivery, surgery, whatever it might be. The OSCE center is the patient exam experience, large rooms and small rooms in this center for higher capacity use in the larger spaces and more one-on-one experiences in the smaller rooms. 14 spaces was the goal, to really get to where we needed to be from a kind of flow-through and capacity point of view. Orientation spaces, students come in, they get oriented, they go out into the circuit, and they have different actor patients that they evaluate, they do write-ups, they do training around that as well, and there's a circuit, circuit experience for that suite and support as well. Those different versions. So there's debriefing. Sophie Davis had a particular interest in terms of OSCEs. They do group OSCEs where they actually have eight students in one room at a time. So that was really where the larger rooms were really started to get their development from, was from their interest in the perspective of the OSCE and the larger. So in terms of where we are in the process, we're coming to conclusion in design right now. August is when we're starting to wrap up our documentation. The center or the third floor of Bellevue will be turned over. Construction will begin in September. Hopefully, abatement will begin prior to that. We're going to wrap that up in May of next year, 2011, and then we're going to hold some time in the summer of 2011 to do AV integration, training of faculty, allow instructors to come over and use the center, and then have programming begin in 2011 in the fall semester.
Thank you.
Put the lights on.
By the way, I just want to say a couple of things. We at the, at the university are very appreciative to Speaker Silver, who really, I guess, was the champion of CUNY being able to get these funds. And if it weren't for him, I don't think this project would have ever been envisioned. So we're very, very appreciative of what he was able to do for us. Also, I just want to point out that HHC at Jacoby Hospital is building their own simulation center. It's not going to be as large or as complex as this one. And in dealing with HHC with this Bellevue lease, it's our hope that our Bronx campuses will be able to avail themselves of that simulation center so that they will have the ability to work in a state-of-the-art simulation center as well.
Great. No questions?
We're done.
I just have one more item. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring back to this committee a project that in June of 2008, you had approved, which is the new dorm out at the College of Staten Island. We had brought to the board that CUNY, along with ACC, which is a nationally-known company that develops dormitories, would develop and operate a 600-bed dorm out at the college. There would be three buildings, it would be three residential buildings on the campus. As everybody knows, around this table, right after we approved this, the financial market basically bottomed out on us, and the ACC had a lot of difficulty in terms of financing this project in light of the guidelines which the CUNY board had set down. We have been working with the college and ACC. We have come up with a new vision for this dormitory. We're going to be building a single building, which will include 440 beds now for this campus facility. The college and ACC are exploring, along with my staff, are exploring various financing options for this project, as well as, we're just going to go back and update the demand study that we did. We did the demand study a number of years ago, because the economics have changed and because we feel that we need fresher data in terms of who would actually live in these dorms. So although this committee is not being asked to vote on this item, we will be back, hopefully in the fall, for a new resolution with the terms of the financing for this new 440-bed facility. So I just wanted to update the committee on that.
Any further business? Close it up. adjourned.
I don't think so.
Very, very busy.